And we're having a work session. And I'm gonna just kind of go on and on to reach.
So welcome to here.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight to talk more about continuous improvement planning, multiple component layer of the continuing improvement plan. And I call that to be implemented through a normal continuous school year. Tonight, I want to share two different parts with you. Part one is preliminary, a slide deck to show you different aspects of the continuous improvement plan, which we call SIPS, education, so great with academia, I can see I can use your slips. And then I want to take you through the actual template, which is going to mirror almost everything I showed you in the presentation. But still, I just want you to think over it a little bit longer. Want you to ask as many questions as you need to tonight in order to fully understand this process, knowing that our three principals will be bringing forward in a future work session with their planning teams, their SIPS to share. We'll come up with that later, but that will be coming. So with that, if there are no questions, we get started. I'm just gonna jump in and share. All right, so tonight is about continuous improvement plans or SIPS. And there are several notions around what the purpose of a SIP is. And if I were to ask a person in the street or maybe in the theater, they might say, well, to get high levels of achievement or student success is about. And I was taken a little bit deeper than that. Because for me, the purpose of a SIP is to increase the effectiveness of instruction practices. The result is greater improvement and achievement for our students. But the purpose is really to make sure that we are using the most highly effective practices possible that will benefit every single one of our students. This is a pretty common cycle for any kind of improvement. But first, we're gonna ask our schools to start with identifying what their school beliefs are. What do they value? What do they believe in? And then from there, we're going to ask our schools to analyze as many pieces of data that they are able to get their hands on and determine what might be glaring at them. What is the area of focus? They're also going to talk in their SIPS and in their presentations about their current reality. And they're going to establish something that's called the theory of action. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. Sure. So I'm gonna dive into that a little bit more deeply in this presentation. But bonus points for you that we've already heard, the theory of action. I already hit the bonus point. You get the bonus point. We're going to determine what the desired outcomes are. And once the real problem is pinpointed in the theory of action, identify one high leverage action and all the steps that need to be in place to ensure that that one action is successful. Monitor progress along the way. And review the data in the spring again and adjust SMART goals. And we'll talk a little bit more about SMART goals tonight as well. Because this is a New Year's example. We didn't want you to have this random jumping over every year. And we want to make sure we're really monitoring and getting progress. So in the spring, data will be looked at again. And it could be the SMART goals need to be adjusted quite a bit for the progress monitoring that takes place. Questions, yes, why? I just wanna comment that one action. I don't think so. So smart, so yeah. That's not how you're supposed to do this stuff really well. You want to. You can work really hard at a lot of things, but lots more hard at a little. You've looked at this next section before. We saw in the last board meeting. But just as a reminder, the nine components we're looking at are the school pride profile. Who are we as a school? What do we believe in? What are the academic and climate data that we need to be utilizing? When looking at all of that data, what really stands out for improvement? What's the current reality? What's working well? What's not working well? What is the specific problem? And what is our predicted outcome? We really get at root cause analysis to find the endpoint where the issue exists. Using SMART goals to identify specific outcomes. Having a plan, knowing what it is we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, who's going to do it, when we're going to do it, and what's going to cost money. And then finally, are our plans having the intended impact? And if not, I'm gonna reject. So those are the nine components that we're going to go tonight in more detail. For our first question, I wanna make sure that we put this document and we're going to be available to everybody that we, it has a warrant to. And so our community members will be able to see a school photo, learn a little bit more on the demographics of each school. Again, the narrative about what kind of strengths we're proud of in our school. And also a copy of the most recent statement for part of the year. So that's component number one, just identifying who we are. This framework is not new to you. This is the same process we use for the strategic plan on mission, vision, values, and goals. What is it that we believe in our school? And there was a robust discussion about this in our administrative team last week. Because the question was, do we look at the school mission and vision? Or do we embrace the new district mission and vision? And what we decided was that we were going to embrace the district mission and vision, but also take the next step and see how does that apply to what does that look like? So in mission and vision, we reviewed district and the network. There will be a process for each school to respond back. But does this look like at our school? And then each school will have a chance to clarify what their collective commitments are. And the goal is just on the actual. So what data do we need to analyze? Boy, it could be so many things, especially because we're looking at climate and we're looking at academics. It could be such as in the top right corner, it could be smarter balanced assessments and what the results look like. It could be the survey where it's on my staff or the parents or students. It could be what we call quick visits where an administrator goes walk-throughs in every classroom every week and everybody's feedback to teachers. It could be looking at office discipline reports. It could be looking at the belonging circle that we started with our students. It could be looking at the DNF list or how many students are failing from transitive classes. It could be, and so many more. This is just a very basic example of the data, something like that. So when that data is looked at, it's pretty easy to see what stands out for improvement. And for the purposes of our SIP here in Mount Angel, I'm asking for the academic area of focus to choose reading, math, or choose one. What stands out for improvement from looking at that data?
Really?
Any other questions? And then when looking at the climate data, again, under some examples, what's going to happen? It's going to be interesting to see how that is approached. But overall, I think that what is going to be the challenge there is when reading or math or science is selected at secondary, making sure that there's a quality responsibility regarding teacher, you know, they're gonna be teaching. And we'll discuss that in this presentation. On the prior slide, I was. In school is the most. Okay, thank you. I. No, it's. Maybe I need to have like a quarter journey for every time I use an African class saying. I like talking. In terms of looking at the current reality, what are the strengths of the area that we chose?
What are those things that are, and will be something else?
I have told them that they are not to be doing this in solitary work.
Okay. So each building will consist of doors?
Yes, there will be three separate. Probably third year, which is. There's, yeah, some, I mean, some of it certainly could be done by the administrator.
I didn't mean to say that.
Some will be leadership teams or smaller teams type of some things. And I was discussing this with the administrative side this week. We talked about where's the most leverage as far as who do you get involved in helping you with different parts of this process? Like in terms of looking at the current area of focus, the reality and what needs to be improved. That would be the first question. Since we want a lot of responsibility to be given, we want everybody to be on the word. So if you have social studies, you generally want them to be worked or do might be. Any thoughts? The theory of action. What is this band you shared? What is it? Yes, it is. What's the specific problem? And working backwards, it's a companion to root cause analysis. What is the specific problem and the predicted outcome? If you get that, just finding the answer, why, 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 why? So. Yes, yeah, it's a thing, it's a thing. It's real. So what I wanted to do next, because this doesn't really help you much to envision it. I wanted to take you through an example of what a theory of action could or should not look like. People often think of theory of action as an if then statement. We really want something more than that. So if, if the school, whether it's here in Mount Angel or elsewhere, were to have an if statement like this, if we integrate common summarization strategies in every classroom, well, then the average ACT composite score will increase by fifteen percent for all. That doesn't, it gives us an if then, but it doesn't really break it down for us. And so the whole point of a theory of action is to build on itself. For example, if we do integrate common summarization strategies in every classroom, then common expectation will be established. And if a common expectation is established, then administrators can observe for implementation during walk-throughs. And if administrators can observe for implementation during walk-throughs, then staff will receive feedback on instructional effectiveness. And if staff receive feedback on instructional effectiveness, then summarization strategies will increase and improve. And if summarization strategies increase and improve, then more students will effectively buy summarization strategies. And then more students will possibly then, at the average ACT composite score will increase. So it's really a lot, it's a scaffold. I agree. It's a difficult to go with that. All right. One of the steps, only because especially with certain groups of children, it may work in that order. Or if they skip one completely and they just move on to the next one, it just works with them. That's a very powerful comment and very important factor. Yes. Other thoughts on theory of action? So SMART goals, a lot of people have heard the term SMART goals, but being able to remember what the S and P R and C are sometimes takes some memorization. Goals need to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant in time down. You can have a New Year's resolution for anything. But if it's not specific, measurable, attainable, relevant in time down, you're not likely to be successful. Most people might not be. Maybe you should, should a little power, which improve. But SMART goals are really what, what gets us to success. So with that in mind, the next component is looking at SMART goals. There will be two SMART goals for academics and there will be two SMART goals for climate. One goal for each of the three schools will be to close the ratio of achievement gap. And they will need to come up with a SMART goal. The second SMART goal will be to raise the bar for all students. They will need to write their SMART goal. And they will also need to identify a measure of tool. Very, very important. They need to know in advance how they're going to be measuring for success. Thoughts? You fine? Okay. The next part of Mount Angel's continuous improvement plans is taking a look at high leverage strategies. And if you look at this example, at the very top, the biggest lens of all, huge telescope we can lay out there, one of the things we want in Mount Angel is to close the ratio of achievement gap. But we also want to use smaller lens to ask our schools, what is the one big thing you're seeing based on data that needs to improve? And then we want them to look through a smaller lens. What is one high leverage action that's research-based that would bring improvement in that area? And then finally, what, what, I can hardly read that. What needs to happen to attain the high leverage action? That's the plan. That's the plan, breaking it down so everyone knows their role. So the action and implementation. One is taking a look at the high leverage action and that relates back to the theory of action. If we do a certain thing, and this and this and this, these things will happen. I will, in future slides, share a little bit more about high leverage. But for the purposes of this particular slide, just knowing that needs to be done first. And then in the plan, it's a very simple action plan that most people are already used to, but breaking down the stages and the steps. What are all of the activities that are being proposed? Who's responsible? When is it supposed to be happening? What professional learning needs to take place with it? And is there a budget or better yet, is it free? We want that especially. So I'm gonna move into some examples of high leverage strategies. Some of you may be familiar with some of them. This is the work of Robert Marsano, who wrote the book Classroom Instruction that Works. Robert Marsano did a meta-analysis of thousands, thousands of research studies and came up with, or to circle there, nine strategies that have the greatest positive effect on student achievement. If a school feels that that is one of those nine is a high leverage strategy, it's going to make a good bitch with what the problem is, that could be something that's like that. Other examples could be from Abbott, where it just requires Abbott. Maybe based on the data that's being looked at. Maybe the school needs to look more at collaborative activities and strategies where students are doing more talking and more participating than teachers are. It just depends on the data. This was something that I found, research-based math instructional strategies. And it was across the curriculum for secondary schools. There's great stuff out there. Another one, the high leverage strategy also is for climate, not just for academics. So maybe PIS, we're asking all of our schools to work through this fall. Maybe this particular school might decide, well, we're not looking at data enough in the climate. And one of the ways that we can really move forward in our work is that maybe we need to look at data as a team every three weeks. Maybe that's. Oh, and thank you for asking, positive behavior intervention. So it's proactive, positive behavior for students. And for staff. One final example, SIA, which is Sheltered Instruction Observal Protocol for secondary learners. We have a number of staff here who have been training in SIA. Maybe based on data, a school might identify, we aren't spending enough time moving back. So maybe this is what we'll choose for non. So now just some possible examples. I have no, first of all, to tell you what it is that they're going to be choosing for their high leverage option, but it does need to be researched. And trying to find something on the net for teachers, for teachers is probably not going to even have enough needs to it to be able to sell it. Right? All right. So for me, the most important part of any kind of learning in a classroom is feedback that we give to students based on how frequently we monitor. It's no different for continuous improvement plans. The more we monitor, the better cancer counts less. It's compared to either having an autopsy or having a well person check frequently with a doctor. That's what we want, is to be frequent and checking. So schools will be asked to, based on their SMART goals that they established this fall, give interim outcomes in December, January, somewhere in that window. Maybe a little bit later this year because they're not due until the end of October. But we'll wanna hit somewhere in that window, somewhere between March and April and then end of the year. And the same goes for raising the bar. Both of those will have progress monitoring forms to fill out. Sure. And is this something that they will be sharing at the school board meetings? Yes, yes, they will be sharing their entire plan with you. Well, I thought roughly in like a January meeting, would they be sharing like, here's, here's our outcome with this school themselves as well. That's my proposal for your consideration. Probably is that the quarterly would move from them talking about strategic planning to this. And I will talk about quarterly strategic. Yes. Any thoughts on that? I would love to hear that, how we're doing in these schools. It was, so.
I'd love to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah. So the timeline, the principals did receive the directions and the September. I stretched this to October 31st based on the fast heartbeat that I could tell was happening in the room, giving them as much time as possible, knowing that the power is in the conversation. It's not just necessarily slapping things in there in the document. It's making sure there are rich conversations between staff members to come up with solutions and progress monitoring. So that will determine when the presentations will happen during a work session. During fall and winter, the principals are going to need to submit a continuous improvement plan monitoring form to me. And they will make quarterly reports to school that are meant to be acceptable. And then during the period of June 2023 into September, that will be the chance to take a look at the end of the year data, but also make revisions with their teams. Now, there are a couple of givens here that I think are really important for everybody to know. One is that all content areas are still priorities. Things don't go away. Just because we choose one to focus a little bit more time and attention on. And two, the second given is that equity practices are embedded throughout the SMART goals and the action and improvement. For those reasons, we're going to be asking our administrators to share their plans with us while they're planning, hence Erica, and what people will take a look at and provide. Questions?
Just some, some. There'll be monitoring form. So clearly, all, they're going to be using the same form, kind of, whatever they want.
Yes, and I've already done that. Yeah, that consistent structure.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yes. Really worth it. Yes. Any other questions? And I like the kid, you know, a little bit, and then that consistent structure will be neat. It's really helpful.
So, so you and. Are going to be the ones giving the kind of feedback directly in terms of giving them all about.
Yes, and we want to be available every couple of weeks, just open calendar for them to come in. For we, too, like. Our equity, diversity, and inclusion community has just started. We're having leaning to tomorrow, depending on what we identify as a focus. But actually, it could be a thousand different ones if we use to figure out the BSEPS. But that hasn't been discussed yet in the. Can I ask you, who makes that move? Sure, right now, we have one student, one parent, one teacher, Erica and I, and Maria Chavez from the ESD. We're going to expand, but first we want to make sure that you know what our purpose is before we move to the house.
So, we're on the side of needing to have a full. For a year, so it's our plan for this. But in the second slide, it is more like our two-year plan.
That is correct.
So will this kind of like, then, then, I think that going for a second year?
Yes. We want them, we want each school to take a look at their data needs brand and modify what they need to modify, but don't kind of lose, keep working. I don't think anyone would get a hundred percent for the newness. It was playing as much.
And this is the improvement plan. Will we, will they be reporting on as part of the report? Or will they be identifying those pieces that were seen in your suggestion? Or what? Certain grades or things are actively changing to make those improvements where they might apply.
Yeah. And I hope that we had an quarterly report to them today. Everybody still with me? And I haven't had to use my computer once. Other questions?
Wondering, no. Middle school and high school, since they're taking one, yeah, science. I understand, I, I understand that goes through every single classroom, no matter what you're teaching. I was just wondering how that concept's gonna be for a lot of staff. It would be very, very challenging because I don't teach. I teach, you know, X, Y, Z. I don't teach, you know, what, but it, it, it means everybody's, you know, through my content area that I'm looking at that focus. So it's gonna be a huge shift for people.
I agree with you for currently, you've, we've been just chosen and especially. Well, because they read and all of those, it, those programs. But I know that it depends a lot on how strategic you are in choosing your high leverage action. If you choose math, for example, as a building, and you choose a high leverage action that is math, then you're gonna have a hard time getting by and everybody's in the school, right? But if you can choose one strategy from, or it could be that we're not giving students enough voice to lead on the discussion or to collaborate with each other. That is a high leverage action. That is a high leverage action that can be used across. So it's going to be, it's going to take some training for sure. I, I agree. We've had good discussion about this in our administrative team and that was the, we're right there with you. I mean, that, that was the reason we picked up on, so we've had good discussions about that. And what may be needed for staff.
The aesthetic filters down from that to your SMART goal. I mean, every teacher is going to have a SMART goal at every level, you know. So yeah, how does that conceptually all fit?
I would say if I had a dry erase board now, I would, I would draw this for you, but I'm going to do it in the air. This is anytime you start something new, you, you have this ideal anticipation that it's going to be this straight error, right? But in reality, it's this. And then it takes a while, so.
And there are times.
Sometimes it goes down the protocol.
Yeah, and that.
It's true. Second thing, ministry, just feel like after you discussed them and like gave that example that you just gave us the collaboration off. Did it start to click with them? Okay. And so they would be able to hear that with the staff, but wouldn't fully.
And I, I would mean that that's one of the reasons why heartbeats are going so quickly. Can I share this because they could see the writing on the wall, so to speak, knowing that this was going to be.
Do they put teams or any select or they just kind of marinating on what they're going to do next or?
They're, they're marinating. They have different teams for different things, like the guiding coalitions that are happening and that are going. That's mostly a hate girl and mostly climate, so they'll be able to do a lot of work with the dying coalitions. But they might want to pull in leaders from the very certain aspect. I'd say the more people have a willingness to set up a business, right? Instead of just a small group sitting in the room and getting it down.
I'm curious what's going to. It's not in the back, but with that specific borderline spreading out. I need help from other teachers in that certain area. I'm curious if the change would be towards specific focus. How it's going to affect the kids because if you go to a classroom. I'm curious how they're gonna.
Do you have a prediction on it?
I really have a very different group of kids. There's kids who can adapt anything. I know this big class fits. They can go with the flow, whatever's going to come out of them totally. But it's a group of kids who really like their schedules and they like to have their routines. I'm a routine person. I like, I have to do a specific routine in the morning and I'll hold it, swear. And then there's a group of kids who just. Oh, no, I feel like they maybe have a hard time with this, but I don't think they would be opposed to the idea of something different. Because after a while, it seems like. It's repetitive. I don't think this is a bad idea. Maybe joking that's going to be a negative thing, but there may be some kids who might have a hard time.
And I would guess there will be kids that are asking why, right? And they need to know they need to have an answer for that.
And I would say that probably the bigger goal from the teacher would be that. You know, I'm not going to really realize they're going to be teaching me that. It's certainly not what they've been. You might, you might, do you want this product to be early to come and shake? Rest of the class. And that would be the core of some of the benefits like. Some of that math comes across in some time. That, that's the goal of that leveraging.
Talking about politics, not politics specifically, but like groups of people and maybe they'll bring in like dad and they can figure out what percentage of people. Not only for my job, I need to pay attention to how certain kids react to this. Just because again, routine compared to the kids who don't. Gives you something different.
Well, I would like to share the template with you, which will go very quickly because it reflects everything that was done here. It's just a matter of. Going through, so you know, what's being painted or downloaded, those kinds of things. So nothing catches you off guard. When this is presented to you. So I'm a friend photo who want to also make sure and give credit to the planning team. And then on the second page. Your formula with this now, the components we're looking at, the cycle that we're looking at. Number one, school profile on here, it's just a couple of lines, but when things get. But it could be that it's several pages long, right? So there'll be some narrative and some things to put in there and put in the report card. And then the foundational beliefs is number two, again, using the district mission and this vision. But answering the question, what is something that. Academic performance, this is another area where on the template, it's not taking up very much room. But this is where we want them to be doing the data. We want to know exactly everything that they looked at. In order to identify what the one thing was that stands out. So that in reality could be several pages long once things get added to the template. And page four, excuse me, number four, this is where we want them to make that big decision. What is your area of focus? What's your commitment? And then analyze the current practices, both strengths and areas for growth. Number six, the theory of action. My guess is it will be longer than this one page, but again, it's the quality in the process. It's the most important thing, not getting it within the template. Any questions? Number seven are the two SMART goals for closing the racial achievement gap and raising the market call. And I just want to reiterate again, there are two SMART goals for academics. And in the template, you're also going to see the same two frames for.
So a question on the SMART goals.
Sure.
So the SMART goal is a school-wide SMART goal. It does not filter down to a teacher's SMART goal. Well, I don't think that's what I'm looking at. That's why it's asking. That's maybe. I'm going to ask too much.
So we have this discussion with the administrative team and I think that we'll come to just that we like to use the one. SMART goal in their own profession.
Right.
Yeah, great question.
Right, so they're killing two birds with one stone. And then thinking that. It's going to be school-wise SMART goal, then you're just going to filter down to your. Whatever your subject, grade that you're teaching. And that would be right.
Nobody else is doing extra things. They get me wrong.
That also creates anxiety to people that are just feeling off the chart. Kind of both for themselves for the year that has nothing to do with anything. School, but it's out there, so. It's good, it's real good.
Number eight is the high leverage action and you'll see that highlighted in yellow, it says. Should side research base instructional strategy. There's plenty of good research out there, see a bit, which is rich, there's so much. We know so much. We have all the answers. We just need to implement it in so many instances. Uh, the next page, plans for implementation, again, the action plan. Getting very clear about who's doing what, when, where. Progress monitoring. Those windows of time, somewhere between December, January, March, April and the end of the year. And then the next is just the same thing, same templates, but we'll find it instead. So that is the simple process for you. Same thing. Well, these are the school that for us to all see and under. Other thoughts or questions were our work sessions. Heavy lift and it aligns well with this. And I'm curious how you see the RTI. Paralleling, weaving in to. I love that question because it ties into development. Each school is in a really different place right now with RTI. Where the high school has the most staff that still haven't, still haven't done to be training yet. And what's happening in the personal hall of this this year. So the knowledge base is different for each different school. And coming down to that training yourself, you know, that being able to embed interventions into your school day. Not before school, not after school, but during the school day is going to be really, really important. And so I'm interested to see that too, I'm confident. I know that both Mr. Chamber and Mr. Figerson have already invented a master schedule that to, to support them. So I think there will be some of. To what degree? I don't know because they, you know, people are going to be in the book and they're like, do this. And there will be, it's that crazy line and my, my. Reaction, my initial reaction response is a lot. That we're taking on for this upcoming school year and so we need to have. For positive recognition, you know, offer each other creation, grace and, and all that stuff. Which I know is natural for you. Leading down these journeys. One of the things I appreciate about that comment is that I know that I can come to all of you and tell you this maybe. And they'll understand. And we might be surprised that it. Gains traction and momentum fairly quick. And buying. With all. We don't need one never knows. It's, I always say you get what you expect and if you don't expect anything. You know, so we're, we're finally, we have that magnifying lens.
And can I say also is when you work beyond our district around the state. There, there's a big pressure for what's happened. Time before, mostly during COVID. Learning loss and trying to get students out and out. We're not the only district that has disparity between students and having, having a plan today. Putting into place, I think that's kind of. Even though it's going to be a heavy lift and heavy load, I think that's a good thing to be pushing for.
Well, yeah, we've been seeing, we've been seeing the disparity over and over every year and saying without.
I would make people learn loss, then COVID. If I was so behind on my math, I don't. I, I just don't understand algebra at all. So I have the hardest time with geometry. I don't know how algebra two is going to go this year.
Luckily, there will be support in place from you during the school day that outside of the course should remove them. Anything else?
The beauty of this is it focuses every campus on the same page. Every week. Doing the same things, looking at the same, maybe in different steps, but. Through this slide, you're both that for the year. Which is really, really wise.
How are you feeling about? Well, I mean, it's ambitious, right? But it's very ambitious and yet. When we look at the data that was shared at the last four meeting. We have to make a whole move. There's no quiet way to start this work. I mean, the disparity is huge and the move has to be bold. So we're just moving forward, but understanding that there's going to need to be a lot of support and a great deal of.
I have a second question. As we move through this and start identifying. If that were to. Crash your. If policy, would that be a bit off to use more district policy?
Anytime that, I mean, that's a good question for all of you to respond to. I will tell you with my response, anytime that we, we can make policy, we need to help that industry.
And I guess, I, I guess I'm wondering if maybe a little more thought with. If you see pieces over the. Policy out there that is impending some level of improvement. That would be our.
Yeah, it would. Yeah, I would agree. If the policy is creating barriers to move forward positively and some of these. We can't break the law.
Maybe the way it's heard it or however it means.
And, and I love that question. So because that means that our systemic thinking, our holistic thinking, and we want to make sure that. Everything at all levels is in alignment, right?
The school's doing, I mean, the, the work to also look at some of the policies to see it up. Having that, that need to do, maybe there's nothing that needs to be. And maybe it needs to be something that needs to be, you know, I, I'm like, I guess, do we do policy review on a monthly basis anyway?
We're looking for folks this year that want to be part of the policy review.
Yeah. Yeah, I. All, all of we fix every year in policy. More fun and changes every year.
I also, something, something of your consideration, when we look at the SMART goals in two areas. The closing the racial achievement gap, I think that's a good opportunity to revisit our equity policy. You know, this is sure that it's in line.
I don't know, just I was downtown the next Friday, that they have the second party again. Instead of first Friday, they have a situation, they have the next Friday, so.
I went down, with a friend of mine, stopped at this one, talking with. Um, I doubt who those kids in the school this weekend, she just commented, and this is to everybody's credit, because. I just think our schoolwork works so well together and does such an amazing job, you guys are just rock, I mean, just. All kinds of real positives to say about everybody, so I'm not, that's pretty awesome. And they said, great, they really enjoyed you too, but just the fact that school board superintendent, you know, they're all working so well together, she was just really. Pleased with it.
It's a pleasure.
All that part of you, like.
Oh, the same.
Kind of really nice. College. A lot there, focused a lot on the new street. They they were really all about um, putting their costumes.
Yeah. When was the, when was in Europe?
Yeah, nice little.
Oh, not good.
Yeah, I guess, or I thought it was played about. Company mall, they're walking around, driving out.
The stripe.